Yeah, we're ready. Chris is at the DA's presentation.
I'd like to, I'd like to call the January 23rd School Committee meeting to order. Do, can I have a motion?
Absolutely. I move to open the public hearing on the FY '21 budget.
Second. Okay, so now, the way this is gonna go is, this is for the public to express concerns or questions about the budget to the school committee. It's not a dialogue. It's like a regular, but we'll take that under advisement prior to which, for our vote, which will be on Monday night. And we'll just, we will discuss things that were brought to our attention about the budget tonight. So, anybody who's, would like to speak about the budget? Thank you. And if you can, we know who you are, but you can just state your names for the record.
Rebecca Lieberman, 50 Pratt Street. Dear Superintendent Doherty, Ms. Kelly, and members of the Reading School Committee, I urge you to restore funding for Virtual High School, VHS, in the fiscal year '21 school budget. Reading used to offer VHS courses, but this opportunity was taken away in the fiscal year '19 budget and never brought back, even after the override passed. VHS courses can provide a huge benefit for students at very little cost. They allow students to take classes that otherwise would not fit into their schedules or that are not offered at RMHS. VHS courses can also be very helpful for students dealing with chronic illnesses, social emotional issues, or who need to be out of school for a period of time for any other reason. In fact, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education suggests that schools increase their offerings in advanced coursework, and it's in our district improvement plan also to increase AP class access. And when there's only one section of an AP class offered without the VHS option, it's very difficult for a student to take that AP class, impossible in fact. And this definitely affected my kids. One of my kids definitely benefited from the VHS option for that very reason. In addition, bringing back VHS would allow our district to resume offering Algebra I in 7th grade to those students who need that extra challenge, followed by Virtual High School Algebra II. This pathway used to be available in our district until the 2012-13 school year, and many other districts still offer 7th grade algebra for students who are ready, and we should as well. And the other two budget concerns I have, the quick, after, seven years after the implementation of the new math pathways, we still do not have math curriculum guides for all courses from K through 12. Is there any funding we could put at this problem to get this done? And if so, please do so. And the other funding comments I have is, could we please make sure that every student has a physical textbook for math? I've been hearing that, that some courses, it's just online, or there's one copy in the classroom. That's really not good for someone who's struggling in math. A physical textbook is, is, there's no substitute for a physical textbook. So I would appreciate it if you would consider the budget. And the last, the last comment I have is that you're doing some kind of middle school math pilot, and if we could get a cost breakdown of what that's costing us, which, which curriculum we've chosen, why we've chosen it, and how much it's going to cost us in terms of curriculum materials, and does that come with a physical textbook? And if not, is there a way to make sure that happens? Thank you so much, and I'll see you again at the regular public comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing on the FY '21 budget.
Second. Second. All those in favor? Six, zero. Okay, now we will go into our regular agenda, and we'll now hear public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. Ms. Lieberman, did you?
Long time no see. I was, I've been up here many times to ask for a math update, so I'm gonna give you a couple of figures that can help hopefully demonstrate why I think this is so urgent. Parker students are doing much worse than Coolidge in math. Parker 8th graders, 41% of them, did not meet expectations in math, and that's compared to 23% in Coolidge. That's unacceptable, and we need to find out why that is happening, and what, what steps are being taken to address that. Also, we have been seeing declining math achievement overall in our district. The 2015 to 17 MCAS scores, which I have right here, but it's very tiny, you won't be able to see it, but it's directly from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed website, and you can just see, this is students overall, the Parker, the Parker achievement is, is very, very alarming. And in addition, our district restricts access to algebra in middle school to more students than most other districts. We need to find a way to make a pathway for more students to access middle school algebra and have a straight path to high school AP Calculus without having to double up on math courses. Think about what doubling up on high school math courses actually means. These, behind every point in these graphs is a student who is maybe struggling to keep up in math. That's why they weren't in the top track to begin with, and the only way for that student to get to Calculus in high school is to double up on math courses, either in 9th grade, 10th grade, or 11th grade. And who needs Calculus? AP Calculus is expected for all selective colleges. It's expected for most engineering, physics, and math programs in secondary education, I mean, in, in higher education, I should say. And it's also, you might not realize this, it's necessary for pre-meds as well. And the other problem with doubling up is that it requires a student to know what they might want to do. And why should a 9th grader have to know already that they need to double up on math? What if they take physics in 11th grade and love it? It's already too late to access Calculus for a non-top-track student. And finally, it just, it, it's an issue of fairness and equity. We talk a lot about our high-needs subgroup, but we don't spend a lot of time talking about students in the middle, which is the majority of them, and students at the high end. So I have proposed several times, there are other ways to do this. You can check out some of the other district websites and see how they're doing it, but I had suggested maybe a slower-paced Math 7 eighth course for 7th graders who are not in the top track, but, but would like to be able to access algebra, followed by a slower-paced Algebra I, followed by a geometry course in 9th for them that picks up the remaining Algebra I topics, and then they're caught up in case they would like to have a straight path to Calculus. I've asked many times about this math update, but I just want to reiterate how important this is with the disparities between Parker and Coolidge, with the declining achievement scores, and with all the changes taking place. We're adopting apparently a new middle school math curriculum. We have combined different levels of students in the same math classes. We need to find out how this is working, do some serious evaluation. And if there's something that needs to be fixed, we need to fix it, or if it, if it's not working at all, then we need to rethink. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. You have a negotiation, because consent agenda?
Yep, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Couple of questions first.
Okay, there was a second?
I did.
Mr. Y.
Okay, so just a couple of quick questions, and maybe Dr. Doherty, you can help clarify real quick. On the first one, which is the, I have a tech for humanity.
Mm-hmm.
Number eight, and I think it even refers to it later, it says former teachers. Do we normally send former teachers?
That's, that's, yes.
Yes?
Yep.
And?
As long as we have a Reading Public School employee as the lead chaperone.
As the source.
Yes.
Okay. And then further on, in number 21, on that same thing, it says, and seniors would get first priority. Will we clarify if that's upcoming seniors or outgoing seniors?
No, not outgoing seniors.
Upcoming seniors.
It's upcoming seniors.
Okay. Then, that was, that was the question, so thank you.
So are you okay leaving that?
Yep.
Anything else? All those in favor? Zero, thank you. Okay, now we'll have reports. Dr. Stice, how are you?
I'm well. I don't have a report this week.
No reports?
Mr. Y.
I guess I'll cover as briefly as I can some of the Select Board updates. I think the biggest one that came out of the Select Board update that is likely to impact us, and either this year or next year, is the notification that was given during that meeting that RMLD will be cutting the dividend to the town of Reading by approximately $500,000, although it could range a little bit. I think actually one of the Select Board meeting members is at the RMLD meeting right now as we speak, talking about that a little bit, two of them. Did Vanessa make it too? Okay. I knew Mark was going, but Vanessa was unsure as of Tuesday, so. To ask about that and maybe follow up a little bit, that's supposed to be effective as of FY '22, as it stands right now, but that's a pretty significant adjustment. We'll see if that impacts FY '21 in terms of step down or anything else like that. We don't yet know the answer to that question, but that's something for us to be aware of as it does impact budget-related information.
Can I ask a clarification on that?
Sure.
I was told that it wasn't definite yet, that it's, it's being considered, but it wasn't definite yet.
A vote has not been taken yet.
Vote has not been taken, but the interest has been, and I think the vote's happening tonight. It's on the agenda for tonight, so it might, by the time this meeting's over, it might be official unless it's renegotiated, but it sounded like it was more or less set in the way it was presented, but hopefully we can reverse that or have further negotiations and conversations there. But that could have pretty decent impact overall. Maybe less directly appropriate to us, but there was quite a bit of public comment about the building that's formerly known as the Daniel House. It, you know, there was some concern raised by some of the residents in that, in that area, and there is a meeting that's coming up at the library on the 30th of this month. If anybody's interested or impacted directly by that, that's something to be aware of. And then there was quite a bit of good presentation with regards to, actually, one other thing of budget note, and maybe Ms. Dowd knows even more about this, but it sounds like we sold a set of debt that came in at a very, very advantageous rate of 1.06% because of Reading's AAA rating. That included in that debt that's impacting to us is the debt for the, the TURF II related space. So that was, that was security, TURF II, and one other thing that I'm missing, but overall, it came in at a very advantageous rate for Reading. They essentially paid us more than we asked for, so that was nice. And then secure, there was the security update as well that was given. If you haven't read it, I would recommend that you go watch that video. It was very informative. Mr. Lausher gave the presentation, but Dr. Doherty and most of the school committee was there too to hear it and see it, and we didn't have anything to add, so it was very informative in that regard. So if anybody's still interested in that, please go read or go watch. And then there was some economic update-related information that ultimately will help drive more revenue in the long run, hopefully, that will help us maybe close some of the other gap we just mentioned, so that's the quick update.
Thank you. Ms. Barowski.
Yeah. Sorry.
Dr. Docstr.
I do. So RCTV, I raced over there after the Select Board meeting and got a summary of what they'd done before and was there for the last part of the meeting. It was really great to see Alex Ferreira and Michael McLaughlin, two of our students from RMHS there at the meeting, so actively involved in it. The agenda included a huge thank you to the Rotary for their generous donation for all that the RCTV does for the town, including but not limited to the coverage of the street fair and other events like the Taste of Metro North. So it's two great groups working together, and the Rotary was giving back to RCTV. Also discussed was the current and next year's budget. They updated FY '20 because Comcast and Bresin came in a bit higher than expected, those are always nice surprises, and confirmed, revoted the previous meeting's vote for FY ' '21's budget. The new, the new business reflects RCTV's constant focus on helping our community. They're working to establish a weekend food drive, probably during May or June, to support the children and families that are supported during the school year, because kids get their food here at the schools, and then they go home for the summer, and they don't have the same source of nutrition. So they're talking about organizing a food drive, and the food will be given to specific charities who have this mission, and Stephanie Johnson from Reading Cooperative Bank, who's on the board, the RCTV board, will be researching the charities to be giving that to. I thought that was really exciting. RCTV, and when they do these programs, they're helping the community, and they're also bringing people in so that people learn about what RCTV offers and how they can get involved. RCTV is also considering for the fall a way for high school students to lead programs, helping people in the community to use technology. Again, giving back, but bringing people in through the doors. They're setting up, they're thinking about setting up stations where students can demonstrate what they're learning in their classes here at the high school, like video editing and how to use technology that's available at RCTV, at school, and at home. People can bring their mysterious devices and get some help with it. Their goal is to bring more folks into RCTV, thus educating the community about RCTV as a resource and a worthwhile organization to invest in. After recording the Martin Luther King Jr. celebration at the PAC, they're now gearing up for election coverage. So this year, instead of doing candidate statements, they are doing interviews with school committee and Select Board candidates, and they're not part of, in the past, they were part of a regular program, but this is not going to be part of that regular program. This is gonna be something different. The candidate forums, stay tuned, are on February 13th, and there will again be election coverage to count on. So that was RCTV, and I'm sort of assuming that Ms. Kelly might be doing something about the Martin Luther King Day event, or the, the Most Likely to Succeed event? Is anybody gonna talk about that?
No.
So in a nutshell, I felt really privileged to be able to attend Friday's professional development, where we watched together, all the teachers watched the Most Likely to Succeed movie, and I understand that the Vision of the Graduate group watched it last night as well at their meeting. And just in a nutshell, I thought that the movie was quite enlightening. They talk about a high school that's approaching education in a more process-oriented way. And then, very much a part of the importance of this program was that all the staff divided up and went for discussion in smaller groups about, and they were asked three questions that are all gonna be part of the data for the Vision of the Graduate, and to promote discussions, and they included, what are the hopes, aspirations, and dreams that our community has for our young people? What are the skills and habits of mind that our children need for success in this rapidly changing and complex world, which was really captured in the movie as well? And what are the implications for the learning experiences we provide in our school system? So I was just really glad to be a part of the group watching the movie and the discussion afterwards. There's good things happening in our district, and I hope people pay attention to that. And the other is just a shout out to our school groups who participated and our administration that were present at the Martin Luther King Day event that was organized by the Human Relations Advisory Committee, with very few hands, I think they put on one of the most stellar celebrations that they've done in years. And it was very thought-provoking, many thanks to Grant Hightower for his version of his own dream that we all play a very important role in, not waiting for other people to make the difference, but participating in making the difference with each other. Our school chorus and the clergy choir that was first formed this year for this event. The speakers, we had two speakers, Kimma Hall and Grace Brenner, who did, Grace wrote her own poem, which was quite moving, and Kimma brought in quotes from Martin Luther King, from Love Your Enemies. And I just, I can't count how many times the tears started during this celebration. I, and there was also parents of students and past chairs of the Reading Human Relations, Human Relations Advisory Committee who also spoke, Lori Hoden and Monique Naratarium. Forgive me, Monique, I kill your name every time I say it.
I did it good.
I did it good?
Yeah.
Phew. But they spoke as well. So it was just a really, I'm so glad to spend my Martin Luther King Day mornings that way. And thank you to Freedom Gluten-Free Donuts. We had enough gluten-free donuts that were soy-free, dairy-free, nut-free for everybody, anybody that wanted them, and they were delicious. And Honeydew Donuts and Reading Cooperative Bank, who provided the waters. Honeydew provided the coffee and dew drops. So it takes a community to do these things, so many thanks to everyone that made that possible.
Can I just give one more shout out? So for those of you who, who were able to attend, we do booths in the hall, and we had our Parker and our Coolidge teams there, a World of Difference groups, really promoting that vision of peace, and we're so thankful to have a World of Difference in our schools. Both Parker, Coolidge, and the high school all have pretty active membership. They just went to the training again, and it's exciting to see them, as well as the Gay Straight Club was also in attendance. So gave out some nice rainbow pins. So it's really, that, that event has really, I think, blossomed not just a day to commemorate and respect the words of Martin Luther King so that that message lives on, but really, as a community, to really say that we don't stand for any hatred of any kind, and I'm proud to be part of that too. So congratulations to Josh Goldlust, who was the Chair of the Human Rights Advisory Council, who did, as you said, an amazing job. I was so impressed. It really was, it was one of the better ones. They were always great, but I think the kids' involvement, for me, made it really special.
It was. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to The Chronicle also for advertising it last minute, getting the word out.
You're good.
Yeah, I'm done now.
Ms. Kelly?
I have no reports.
A couple of updates from the REC Committee. The Birch Meadow Subcommittee has been disbanded. They're now doing a Birch Meadow Working Group, which is more towards the town employees. I think Mr. Huggins is gonna be on it, and somebody from the school committee is going to be on, not school committee, but the, the school's gonna be on it. I think they're asking Mr. Zaya to join. Big topic, Sunday hours for athletics is yet again coming up for the morning. As spring approaches, it's gonna come fast and furious. And then I wanna give a quick shout out to Ms. Dowd and Mr. Huggins for all the work they did with TURF II. Bringing that project in under budget with the results that happened is an amazing job.
That's great.
Great, thank you. Yes?
Can I say one more? Sorry, the ad hoc human rights organization, we are going to meet on January 30th at 7:30? Seven or 7:30, sorry, in the town hall. And it's an open meeting, so anybody and everybody is welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so the, thank you. Next item on?
7:30. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is that everyone got the questions this afternoon, and then there's a paper copy. I don't think the intent was to go through every question.
Be here a few hours if we did that.
It was for people to look at and prepare for, for Monday night, and I guess also if there's any additional questions that anybody might have about the budget. Can I ask that now?
The only, similar to what we've done last year, we attempted to group the questions by, if they were general questions, by CAC Center, and then within CAC Center, if we got similar questions, we did list all the questions, but we did group them, and you may see cross-references. If we've answered a question, we may just refer you to that rather than being completely repetitive. So we did take that feedback from last year and incorporated it, and tried to streamline it a little bit more this year.
And the other thing I'd add is, since you just got these, if you want to, we won't go right into Monday night and vote. If you have follow-up questions or concerns about things that, after you've had time to review them, we'll dedicate the beginning of the meeting to do that on Monday night. Yes?
Can I ask a quick question? So I've had some conversations with folks in the community about the budget, and people have been paying attention to the meetings and whatnot. My question, I guess, is more for Dr. Doherty and Ms. Dowd. Have you heard any particular feedback or trends of questions you're getting from the community that you, that aren't reflected in these questions? Or do they feel like, yep, people in the school committee asked that, or did you hear? Is, is there anything that you've heard, and I actually might throw this out to fellow committee members, anything that you've heard that isn't reflective in these questions?
I feel the questions were reflective, and if we were hearing anything, the answers tried to weave in, if we added, we may have answered more than the question based upon?
Anticipating.
If it didn't ask exactly what we were hearing, we tried to expand, flow that through as well, to expand on the answer based on what we were.
This went through a very rigorous editing process over the last week.
It's not short.
So these, these questions will become part of the, the school committee budget document?
Yes, yes. We'll actually post these tomorrow on the website and blog, and so they have, and it'll be in the packet too, for Monday night, we'll put them in the packet too.
And when we submit this to finance committees, these questions will be submitted as part of it, so that while they're formulating any thoughts or questions they have, they can refer to, ideally, they can refer to these questions. refer to, ideally, they can refer to these questions.
I haven't checked today, but last time I checked, we haven't posted the presentations that you guys prepared as part of this to the website. Can we do that as well?
Yep, I have it, I have a, no, whatever.
Send us an email, I think today or yesterday to do that?
Did I do that?
Yeah, you did. I got an email from you.
I didn't, I don't think I got the email.
I thought you did.
I'll double check.
But I'll, yes, I've got it, no.
Wasn't me, might have been somebody else.
Oh, it was you.
That's crazy.
Is there any questions from the public? Okay, so...
Oh, that was a different topic.
I'm sorry.
That was regarding the, 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 the security.
Yeah, that's on my list too.
Mine was, mine was about...
No, that was about the security, which I also have a note to post that tomorrow too.
Now I know I'm not crazy.
Well, I'm crazy. So the way Monday night will go is, as I just said, we'll have an opportunity to follow up on these questions. The, if any committee member has, wants to make or has proposals to make adjustments to the superintendent's budget, if you could give me a heads up and superintendent, just so if there's any preparation that needs to be done. It's not to draw value judgments on anything anyone wants to do, it's just to be aware of it before the meeting. The other thing is, along those same lines, as Mr. Wise indicated, you know, we could end up seeing having to make a change to this budget, so full steam ahead with what you want to do, but just be mindful that, you know, to use an accounting term, last in, first out type of thing, so if we start adding things, we may have to then pull them back out, so, or at least have a discussion about that. And, you know, our goal is, our charge is to submit a balanced budget to the town manager. So again, if someone has, wants to add things to the budget, there would have to be a corresponding cut somewhere to do it, so, or a proposal of how to do it, whether it be free cash or something, so. Does anyone have any questions? That is the, no other discussion. Is there any other motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. All those in favor? Zero.
People don't know what to do with their time now.